And welcome to the Glasgow City Council regular scheduled meeting. Let's begin our meeting with a pledge of the flag.
Pledge of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as we're strong.
I'm gonna call on councilman Freddie Norris to lead us in invocation, but I'd like to spend just one moment before he prays remembering a servant of the city of Glasgow, a gentleman named Robert Terry. Robert serves on the Glasgow Housing Authority Board of Directors and has been on that board since 2020. He is the resident member of the Board of the Housing Authority, and he passed away this morning, so let's remember him in our thoughts and prayers. Freddie?
Reflecting on all your servants gathered here and throughout the city, whether they're in uniform, or whether they're at job right now. We're one together, and when we lose one, we lose a part of ourselves, really. Thank you, Lord, for supplying what we need in moments of death, knowing that through you we have a future. This week is a special week, really, because it's Valentine Week, and it's a theme that we think of, and we come to you, really, to say, what can we say that would just effectively express our hearts, knowing that you love us to that depth? Tonight, we gather to discuss and carry on the business of your people, Glasgow, Kentucky. We appreciate our freedom, and for those that are absent tonight, our friends, I pray that you'll be with them, strengthen them in what they face. Those that are heavy facing things in their families across our town, may we remember that we're neighbors to everybody. As we approach Easter and think what you've done for us, we're humbled, and we just want to say thank you from the bottom of our hearts, because it's through Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Be seated. I'm gonna ask city clerk Mona Simmons to call the roll.
Via Zoom, councilmember Benel. Guns.
Yes, ma'am.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry.
Here.
Marion.
Yes, ma'am.
Neal.
Here.
Norris.
Here.
Trig.
Here.
Whitcher.
Here.
All right, we have 100% attendance. Thank everybody for being here, and we appreciate Terry being here via Zoom tonight, and we're just kind of a wet night tonight, so we're gonna huddle in here and have a good council meeting. Next, I need to entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. You were given it on Thursday. I entertain a motion to proceed with the meeting tonight using the agenda that was sent out.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilman Neal. Any discussion on tonight's agenda? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move forward first item to approve the minutes from the meeting we had back on January the 22nd. I entertain a motion that we approve those minutes. You've had them and had a chance to look over them, so we'll consider them from that.
Motion.
From councilman Marion.
Second.
Second from councilman Kirkpatrick. Any discussion about the minutes? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and the minutes are into the record. First item of business tonight, we've got a special presentation, and I'm going to ask, well, actually, I'm gonna go ahead and introduce a guest. We have John Clark. John is the law enforcement consultant for the Kentucky League of Cities. John, we really enjoy the relationship this city has with the Kentucky League of Cities, and I understand there's a special presentation that you would like to make. The floor is yours, John.
Well, thank you, Mayor, City Council. I really appreciate you having me tonight. I won't take up too awfully much of your time, but it is super important that I come and bring you this information, because I feel like it's crucial for you to know how your police department's doing, and they're doing a great job. As the mayor said, I'm John Clark. I'm a law enforcement consultant with the Kentucky League of Cities. Every three years, KLC meets with law enforcement agencies and completes what we call a safety and liability review. It's a comprehensive look at the agency's leadership, their training, their policies, and best practices. Chief Howie and I met and sat down with his executive staff and took a comprehensive look at how the Glasgow Police Department handles these areas. More specifically, we looked at the things that do two things. These are the things we concentrate on the most, the things that can get officers hurt and the things that get officers, the department and the city sued. We want to avoid those things. We want to do everything we can to help them avoid those things. Some of the areas that we examined, it's over 60 areas that this review looks at, but some of the examples are their drivers' training, their firearms training, their response to resistance training, their warrant service, how they take care of property and evidence, and the equipment that they have, both police equipment and the equipment that they're required to have in cases of emergency that are required by OSHA. OSHA, as you know, keeps track of how you're doing as far as an emergency response, and there can be some heavy fines if you don't have the things that you're supposed to have, and that equipment's very important. KLC has extremely high standards when it comes to these reviews. In fact, the bar keeps moving. If you're 100% or 85 or 90% one year, three years later, you may have made strides, but the bar moves forward also, because as advances in policing come about, we advance what it means to be up to those standards. But the Glasgow Police Department has demonstrated a 100% score, meeting or exceeding all industry standards in every area that we measured. This is an accomplishment not only for the police department, but also for you all as a city council. They don't do this alone. They can't do this without the proper funding and the proper backing from this group. So, on behalf of the police department, on behalf of the citizens of Kentucky, I thank you for supporting them. So, in appreciation for everything that they've done in accomplishing this goal, we have a plaque that we would like to present Chief Howie and the Glasgow Police Department.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And I'd love to have somebody take a picture for me, if there's anybody that's willing to do that.
All right. Let's go ahead and do it. Beautiful plaque. Oh, I don't need to be in it. All right, all right, one more. Hold on, we got to fire chief. Late to the fire. Here, all right. Chief Howie, would you like to make some remarks, sir?
I would, Mayor, just one quick remark. Back in, I believe it was 2016, when we went through the scorecard process before and we got 100%, we maintained that for the longest time. When I left in 2019 and came back, we were still on track, and it wasn't, it was because of Major Flat that we have been able to maintain this prestigious award, because it is a constant, well, you all know, you hear, you hear all the policies that come before. We run them by the mayor, we run a lot of those by Rich, and I mean, it's constant, and we train to those standards. We train our officers when those new ones come out, and it's quite a task for a person to maintain that, and Major Flat does a fantastic job with that.
Yes, he did.
On the other hand, as he, as John told you all about OSHA and the equipment that we have, we couldn't have that without your all's support, and it is, it's an ever-growing task, and it's getting harder and harder every year to maintain those standards. So, thank you, but I wanted to make sure that you all knew that the job that Major Flat had done with this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Another round. Major Flat's one of those guys, he just gets it done, and we're mighty proud to have him in charge of that program, for sure. And John, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate that, and we always, we're proud of all of our city departments and appreciate the recognition that you have given us here tonight. All right, the next thing I want to do is I want to call the City of Glasgow Maintenance Director to the podium, Dennis Prophet. Now, Dennis is, he will have you believe that he doesn't really like speaking, but Dennis is so important to the city of Glasgow, because he is in charge of maintenance, of keeping things around here running, and we've had a scare over the last three weeks or so with the boiler being down over at the Plaza Theater. I've heard all different kinds of rumors from all different kinds of people, most who know nothing about boilers, about what was wrong with the boiler. But we have Dennis Prophet, who keeps this whole, the whole city plant running, but he's been deeply involved in the troubleshooting, securing the parts, and I just think it's important, Dennis, that you tell the citizens of Glasgow, who have all been interested in the Plaza Theater, where we are.
Well, as you all know, a month ago, we ordered the parts. Last Tuesday, they were shipped. Here Friday, we got the boiler set inside, it's put together, it's hooked up. Tomorrow, we will be hooking an analyzer to it and starting it up, and then we're gonna have to adjust gas flows and all that to make it operate like it should. So hopefully by tomorrow afternoon, we'll have heat back inside the Plaza.
Just in time for the cold front to arrive, right?
That's it.
Well, I mean, it'll be a good way to test it, and it is, it's amazing, Dennis, people who have equipment like that, parts have not gotten back into a nice supply of parts available, or you all had to go fishing all over the place, didn't you?
I don't really see that happening anytime soon of any type of part.
Yeah, gotcha, gotcha.
It's just kind of a new norm, I believe.
And I will say, since it's raining outside, cats and dogs, and Dennis has also had roofing folks here for the last couple of days working over at the Cultural Center.
Yeah, it's true. Art and antique, been having a lot of leaks, so.
Yeah, yeah.
New guttering and some sealing up, and hopefully we'll have all that corrected before it be good and dry inside.
So, part of having nice facilities is taken care of, and I appreciate, Dennis, I appreciate your persistent efforts to get this boiler going, so now we will be able to have Little John with heat on the 24th. So, the tickets are on sale for Little John, and everybody's kind of worried about that. If you don't know who Little John is, you saw him in the halftime show at the Superbowl yesterday with Usher and Ludacris performing their 2004 hit, "Yeah." So, we'll have that at the Plaza on the 24th.
Do you want to demonstrate?
Yeah, all right. It just, yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you, Dennis, appreciate that. All right, I'm glad to see that we're taking care of what we have. I think that's a, that's good to know. Dennis is a good one. We have some new business to take care of, and I'm gonna call on city attorney Rich Alexander to explain these ordinances that we need to consider.
This first ordinance, amends ordinance number 2019-2408, an ordinance authorizing the organization of a standing committee known as the Entertain Glasgow Committee. That whereas on August 12, 2019, on second reading, the city adopted ordinance 2019-2408, which authorized the organization of a standing committee known as the Entertain Glasgow Committee. Whereas it is now necessary to amend that ordinance as it relates to the financial aspects of the Entertain Glasgow Committee and the composition of the committee and the terms of its members. Now therefore be hereby ordained by the city as follows. Ordinance number 2019-2408 is amended and shall read in its entirety as follows. Section 1, the city of Glasgow will organize a standing committee known as the Entertain Glasgow Committee. Section 2, the Entertain Glasgow Committee shall have a minimum of five community members to be appointed by the mayor of the city of Glasgow, one member from the Glasgow City Council to be appointed by the mayor, and a minimum of one member from each city department, also appointed by the mayor, as well as the director of emergency management, who shall also serve on the committee. Section 3, each community member of the committee shall serve a term of three years. The city council member shall serve on the committee for his or her term of office, and the other members of the committee shall all serve during their tenure of employment with the city of Glasgow or with emergency management. The initial community member appointment shall be staggered so that not all community member terms expire at the same time. At the conclusion of the initial staggered terms for the community members, all future appointments or reappointments shall be for a period of three years. Section 4, the Entertain Glasgow Committee shall have a chairman and secretary/chairman, but the city of Glasgow shall keep and maintain all of the committee's financial accounts and shall maintain a separate bank account for all of the committee's operations. The committee shall not maintain its own bank account, and the committee's operations shall be a part of the city's annual budget. Section 5, the mayor is empowered and directed to complete any documents, execute any municipal orders, and otherwise oversee the administration, organization, and furtherance of the goals and objectives of this committee. Lastly, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
All right, you've heard the first reading of this ordinance, amending the creation of the Entertain Glasgow Committee. I will entertain a motion that we approve this ordinance.
Motion.
By councilman Neal. Is there a second?
Second, Norris.
Second by councilman Norris. Is there a discussion on this particular ordinance presentation?
Mayor.
Mayor, I also have one question, if I may.
Yes.
In section 3 of this ordinance, if we can talk about the reappointment of the term of three years, did we consider putting, I don't know, have a term somewhat deeper appointed?
I don't believe that's been considered, no, because the original, if I remember correctly, Terry, the original creation was an indefinite time period, so we're just scaling it down from indefinite to three years at this point for the term. But we have not come up with a, necessarily a term limit for this at all. Obviously, that's something that may well need to be considered.
And any consideration is, you know, reappointment of a community member, you know, or any, anyone, if there's, you know, you start to, you know, two, three-year terms, or then you gotta set out, you know, for a year to be reappointed, if there's any consideration, any value you can point to that.
Well, I would say that there might be value for that if we want to work that into the ordinance. I am not aware of any other committees that the city has that has that sort of restriction on it now.
Tax Appeals Board.
The Tax Appeals Board does.
It's the only one.
It's the only one that has a term limit of what?
One term.
One term, okay, all right, okay. Thank you very much. I stand corrected. So, any other discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion?
How many people are on that committee now, serving?
It is, it's the same, it's basically the same makeup.
Yeah.
Just adding the terms.
Yeah. Go ahead.
My question is, what exactly is different that's being amended? Is it the finances?
Yes.
Okay.
I will try to, is it okay if I explain this? Yeah. The original setup for Entertain Glasgow was, it kind of came under the wing of the city, but it kind of had its own checking account and its own finances, and none of that came through the city, and the city's auditors were red-flagging it left and right, that we can't be having a committee that brings in their own funds, pays their own bills, without it coming through the city, because the auditors were saying that is just not really the way this should be set up. So, we're kind of correcting that with this ordinance. Marna?
And I would add too, Mayor, if it's okay, it wasn't that the auditors were saying that anything was being done wrong by the committee.
Right.
It was just, according to the, right, according to the general accounting principles, they felt like that it would be best to be under the umbrella of the city and controlled by the city.
Yeah, that's a lot better. I didn't mean to say there was a problem with it, it's just that they could see problems if we didn't get it all fixed the way that it should be, where we can have the right, you know, information.
So, back to you, Terry, about the term limits. Do you want to add anything to that, or do you, that we should discuss any more about that, you think?
Well, I just think that, you know, it's, again, I mean, people certainly pleasure with the mayor on this, and so, you know, the mayor's gonna be making the appointments, but sometimes it's good, you know, to have people to rotate off and rotate back on, or you rotate new and never come back on. But again, with the appointments being made by the mayor, then of course, then that's a privilege of the mayor to do that, you know, it's certainly a privilege of the mayor, so I don't have a problem with it, I'm just, you know, curious about, you know, we didn't have, you know, the term limits, you know, and the tax return, and it's not, to me, it's not a major factor, I'm just curious why we.
Well, again, that's good discussion. We can do one of two things. We can table this until we can rewrite it and add some sort of a term limit into it, if that's what the pleasure of the council is, or we can approve it as presented and then come back and redo it at some later time.
I'm, I'm, Mayor.
That's a truth.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. Okay. Max, you want to say something?
I just, I think, I don't know, I think that, you know, we just, we just saw this, and it's kind of new, you know, I guess we can pass the first ordinance, and then we can come back on the second, and if there's anything that we want to amend or have time to think about within the next council meeting, we could do so then.
Sure, yeah, sure. Okay, so what I'm understanding is, we had somebody call the question, so we will call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Good discussion. I like the discussion about that, because these are all things that we need to talk about, and we need to be able to talk about them. Okay.
All right, next item, Mayor, is a budget amendment ordinance, and I'm gonna try to summarize this, and I won't, I've got a lot of numbers and accountant numbers, and I won't, I won't be reciting this verbatim, but this is an ordinance that will amend the budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. It allows money to be received in the amount of $7,200 into the general fund for sale of land. It appropriates from the unappropriated general fund the sum of $12,500 to be transferred to the police department, the ammunition and taser cart account. It authorizes the receipt of $42,415 into the general fund, police department, other revenue account. It appropriates from the unappropriated general fund the sum of $26,176 to be transferred to the police department rent and storage account for vehicle and substation lease. It appropriates from the unappropriated general fund the sum of $2,700 that's gonna be transferred to the police department miscellaneous and other account for miscellaneous supplies. It receives the sum of $24,282.41 into the general fund, the opioid settlement account. It appropriates from the unappropriated general fund the sum of $159,319.11 to be transferred to the general fund opioid settlement account for opioid expenses. It appropriates from the unappropriated general fund the sum of $26,000 that will be transferred to the administrative contractual improvements account for the heating and cooling unit. It appropriates from the unappropriated general fund the sum of $10,000 to be transferred to various accounts within the department, the administrative technical equipment account, the police technical equipment account. It receives the sum of $10,000 into the general fund and distributes that $1,700 to the administrative other revenue account, $8,300 into the police department other revenue account. These are from grant monies. It receives the sum of $70,356 into the general fund street department federal monies account. This is from the TAP grant number two. It appropriates from the unappropriated general fund $113,378 that will be transferred to the street department contractual improvements TAP grant account. It will appropriate from the unappropriated general fund $44,435 to be transferred to the administrative other contractual services account. This is for payroll and workers' compensation addition after the insurance audit. And it receives the sum of $410,582 into the sanitation landfill fund to the landfill other revenue account. This is from an insurance check on a compactor. It appropriates from the unappropriated sanitation landfill fund $969,200 that will be transferred to the landfill construction and maintenance equipment account for the compactor, and it appropriates from the unappropriated sanitation landfill fund $36,900 that will be transferred to the sanitation maintenance and repairs account for roof repairs, and it appropriates from the unappropriated plaza fund $24,500 that is going to be transferred to the plaza maintenance and repairs account for the boiler repairs. This ordinance takes effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
All right, you have had this ordinance in your packet, you have heard Rich's summary of it. Before we move further, let's get a motion to consider passage of this ordinance.
Motion, Benel.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilman Neal. Now, we have a motion and a second, we'll open it up for discussion.
Mayor, as you can imagine, we've heard a lot of people that's, you know, had questions about this, and it's my understanding that we've been taking out of this for a while, right? This would be our safety net, that we utilize this money for things that come up.
You're talking about the landfill account?
Yes, yes.
That's been, yeah, that's a long time, that is a big revenue-producing part of what the city operates, yes.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I got one question.
Yes, sir.
Can we in the future maybe order all the sections by the appropriate group, say, like, a lot of these were for the police department and then different ones for the Plaza, can, can it be arranged so we can, you know, faster compare against the budget to see where the money's going? Like, the police department has five of these items, they'd be labeled in there altogether and stuff. Can we do that in the future?
Well, I.
Does that make sense?
Yes, I, yes, I feel like that we could do that, for sure. Now, the thing to remember is, is that this budget amendment is necessitated by the fact that expenses that we have incurred, particularly with having to repair things, with having to buy some of the new equipment, Nick, for the landfill, these, this amendment is based on the fact that as hard as Stephanie and Maddie and all the people upstairs in the budgeting department work, sometimes there are more expenses than what we had budgeted. We have the money to do it, we're just shifting it around to where now the budget sort of agrees with what the expenses have turned out to be.
We're saying a lot of this is unforeseen when they planned the budget and it was passed.
Yes, some of it is, some of it is, well, and some of it's grants that we didn't know we had. Two. we had to budget until we got into the budget here also.
Will this money recoup itself back from the landfill?
Are you saying will the landfill continue to be profitable?
No, I'm not asking that. Isn't this the account that has to have a certain amount in it?
April, do you care to clarify what we spoke about earlier?
The post, the post-close account, which is, which is a little bit confusing to understand what that is, good question.
It has nothing to do with that, we never take money from that, as a matter of fact, we put money into it this year per our permit, where we're required to keep a certain amount. We don't touch that.
So, that's not the account we want?
No, and I'm, I'm sure of where that even came from.
Yeah, that's, that's a regulation that we have to-
That, that was the account I'm calling.
Yeah, right, no.
So, that's called the, uh, closer post-close.
Yeah.
And it's not listed here.
Yeah, and that's heavily regulated too, they look at what we have in that.
I thought it looked.
And, and Mayor, also, I noticed a bunch of these were from grant money we had received. In other words, really, you know, somebody's giving us a grant, that money's sitting over there and now we're just doing the, the bookkeeping to move it back. Can we also identify that in that same, you know, in the category so that we know how much money is being truly balanced out with, from the grant money and how much money is actually coming from, say, the, you know, the general unappropriated fund cap?
Well, I, I'm not speaking for the treasurer, but it would seem to me that that would be, and she wasn't able to be here tonight, but it would seem to me that that would be something that could be done. We have this line item that we gotta pay for, and here's how we're paying for it, and we didn't know when we did the budget that we were gonna have to replace that big, what do you call it, Nick, compa- excavator?
Trash compactor.
Trash compactor, we didn't know that when we came into it, it wasn't like we, it wasn't like it, end of life, it just, it, it failed. So, we now are having to, fortunately, we, we're financially sound enough to take care of it, but we gotta, in government accounting, it's, you have to check off for every dollar that's spent, you gotta put it into the right account before you spend it.
And, and so, I guess I'm gonna just piggyback on that, when he said the compactor, we received a check from the insurance company for a good portion of it.
That's right.
And then the balance of that would be what we're taking-
That's right.
-from the account. So, again, just some clarification of what's going on-
That's right.
-makes it easier.
Yeah, and I guess the way I understand it, Stephanie, they, they have to do this from time to time, because they'll let a number of these things accumulate, I mean, we, we have the money, we pay the bill, but to make it legal, we have to bring it before the council and say, we had to amend the budget to pay for all these things that we have the money to pay for.
And accept money in from grants and things like that.
Yes.
Like the TAP grant, we didn't know that there was gonna be a flood that came through, washed part of it out, we had to extend the grant, they gave us the money and we had to spend it.
And Mayor, as a citizen, I appreciate y'all trying to keep things up to date. For years, we've gone, let things deteriorate, so we could say, but if things are making money and we've got plenty of money, then I appreciate keeping that up to date.
Well, it's a fascinating, you know, I really have had to spend a lot of time learning the difference in government accounting and, you know, public accounting, it's, it all makes sense in the end, but the way you get there is so different, because you have to be able to understand where every dollar came from and where it went and why it did so. And we don't, most of us personally don't run our home accounts anyway.
From the finance, uh, the finance committee, we had a lot of big timing issues, as council members, we need to remember that, we can reset the budget in place, I mean, it's, you know, the best estimate, a guess, before we think we'll get revenues and our expenditures will be, and then just the general operation of the city requires us to make adjustments throughout the year, and with these type of appropriations, the mayor spoke, we've gotta approve these appropriations, you know, because they do impact the budget, and so, as a councilor, just remember that these mages are coming in different times and from different sources, and we have incidents that happen when we gotta cover, and we have a larger expenditure than what we anticipated, and that would be honestly unappropriated, or, same time, we, you know, we have monies that we did not think we'd be getting in, like an insurance check or grants or settlements on other items, and those are gonna impact the budget from time to time. You know, the overall impact of the budget is fairly consistent, I mean, it's not gonna really impact the budget, you know, from, from these items. I mean, we go at times, have major items, if we have a major expenditure, or had, had a large inflow of money, but, you know, as a council, just to keep it in front of you, that when we set this budget and working with the treasurer, that, you know, things are gonna happen from time to time, and we just gotta be aware of that and know that, you know, where this might be, it's gotta be approved, just, you know, move money around and make sure they're cooperating within, within the statutes.
That's a very good point, very good explanation, and I will take this opportunity. When it comes budget time, we have department heads who are very involved, they've lived this all year long, so that when it comes budget time, it's just not a wild estimate, it's plugging in what the costs have been, what the plant life is at each of the different parts of the city, so, it's a very well-thought-out process to try to make this as accurate as possible. These types of things are to, I guess, square up the things that haven't actually, that didn't fall exactly the way the budget had planned, if I'm saying that right. Good questions, good discussion, what other questions? All right, well, if we got a motion and a second, then I will call for a vote, all those in favor of passing the first reading of this budget ordinance indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ordinance passes on first reading.
Next item is a resolution authorizing and approving the sewer overflow and municipal stormwater reuse, reuse grant. Be it hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow that April Russell, Director of the Office of Grant Oversight, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to make application on the city's behalf for a Kentucky Energy and Environment Cabinet Division of Water for the Sewer Overflow and Municipal Reuse Grant in the amount of $100,000, which is not a matching grant. And be it further resolved by the City of Glasgow that Mayor Royce is authorized and directed to execute all documents necessary to make application for this grant.
All right, you had a chance to look over this particular resolution, I will en, I will entertain a motion to approve it.
Motion, Lowry.
And a second by Kirkpatrick. Any discussion on this? If not, then I'll call the question, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Very good.
Next item, Mayor, is another resolution regarding a grant, be it hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow that April Russell, Director of the Office of Grant Oversight, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to make application on the city's behalf with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Office of Highway Safety for a grant in the amount of $22,880 to fund the Child Safety Seat Program, travel and training for the police department, and this is again, a non-matching grant.
Okay.
Be it further resolved by the city that Mayor Royce is authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary in order to make application for this grant.
All right, you've heard the reading of this resolution, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
Motion, Norris.
Okay, second, Councilman Neal. Any discussion? April, what kind of, you know, you know what kind of money is possible with this grant?
Last year, we got, this year, we're currently, and for this one, we got about $15,000. The year before, I think we got $12,000, so it, it fluctuates between there.
All right, it'll be put to good use for sure.
Absolutely.
All right, we have a motion and a second, we'll call for the vote, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is a resolution authorizing another grant application, be it hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow that April Russell, Director of the Office of Grant Oversight, is authorized and directed to make application with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Office of Highway Safety for a grant in the amount of $38,442 to fund overtime, Lifesavers Conference, and to fuel for the police department, this is a non-matching grant. Be it further resolved by the city that Mayor Royce is authorized and directed to execute all documents necessary to make application for the grant.
All right, you had this in your packet as well, and you have read what this grant would be about, I would entertain a motion to approve this.
Motion.
By Councilman Marion, is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Okay, all right, by Councilman Neil. What discussion on this particular Transportation Cabinet grant that you might have? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The resolution is passed. Rich?
Mayor, the last two items are both surplus resolutions, the first one is with the fire department. That whereas the Glasgow Fire Department possesses certain personal property, which is described on Exhibit A attached to the resolution, whereas the personal property is no longer needed by the department, and the department has sufficient equipment available to meet the needs of the department. And whereas it would be suitable and consistent with the public interest for the personal property to be declared surplus and its disposition authorized according to law, therefore be it resolved by the City of Glasgow as follows. Pursuant to KRS 82.083, Subparagraph 3, the following determinations are made in writing. The property to be surplus is the personal property more particularly described on Exhibit A. The intended use of this property at the time of its acquisition was for the use and benefit of the department and its operations. C, the reason why it is in the public interest to dispose of the personal property is due to its age and the fact that there are other similar pieces of equipment within the department which are capable of meeting all of the needs of the department and continuing to maintain and keep the personal property described on Exhibit A would be redundant. D, the property described in Exhibit A is hereby declared surplus. Subparagraph E, the method of disposition to be used shall be by public auction or any other means permitted by law. Section 2, this property shall be disposed of by any permitted means authorized by KRS 82.083, including public auction. Section 3, Mayor Royce is authorized and directed to take any action necessary to carry out the actions contemplated by this resolution.
All right, you've heard the two resolutions about the surplus property, I'll entertain a motion that we approve these resolutions.
Motion, Norris.
Second by, okay, is there a discussion on these two?
Mayor, just for clarification, that was, that was the fire department, we've got one more.
Okay, 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 I thought you had put both of them together.
No, sir, no.
Okay, all right, well, so that's the one on the fire department equipment, we have a motion and a second, so, all in favor of surplusing this property indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The resolution carries now.
The second one, Mayor, deals with the Parks and Recreation. That whereas the Glasgow Parks and Recreation Department possesses certain personal property more particularly described as follows, a Skaggs mower, a 2002 Case skid steer, and two old glass basketball backboards. Whereas the personal property is no longer needed by the department and has, the department has sufficient equipment available to meet its needs. And whereas it would be suitable and consistent with the public interest for this personal property to be declared surplus and its disposition authorized by law. Be it resolved by the City of Glasgow as follows, the following written determinations are made pursuant to law. The property surplus is property described as a Skaggs mower, a Case skid steer, year 2002, and two old glass backboards. The intended use of the property at the time of the acquisition was for the use and benefit of the Parks and Recreation Department and its operations. Again, the reason why is in the public interest to dispose of this property is due to its age and the fact that there are other similar pieces of equipment within the department capable of meeting the needs of the department and to continue to keep and maintain it would be redundant. The method of disposition shall be either by public auction or any other means permitted by law. Therefore, Section 2 states that the property as previously described is declared as surplus. Section 3, this property will be disposed of by public auction or by any other means authorized by law. And lastly, Section 4, Mayor Royce is authorized and directed to take all action necessary to carry out the actions contemplated by this resolution.
All right, you've heard the reading of the resolution, the surplus property that the Parks and Rec Department is putting up for sale, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Okay, well, that's Councilman Neal, and then Councilman Lowry on the second, okay? Is there a discussion on this Parks and Recreation surplus property? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign? And, Mona, the city website will have the particulars on how this is gonna be disposed of, on how, on any auction or the way that people can learn more about this, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We, almost always, almost always, we use GovDeals.
Okay, all right.
It just depends on what it is, but 95% of the time, we use GovDeals.
All right, I just want, people who are hearing this will wanna know exactly how-
So, is this like sealed, bid stand, or is it like an auction?
It's auction.
It's auction style, yes, uh-huh, yeah. Good question, though. All right, those motions have passed. In the packet this week, you got notification of a pending list of appointments per Resolution Number 2016 through 2341, to be approved at our next council meeting on the 26th of February, so be looking at those if you have any questions about that, but just be sure and familiarize yourself with that. We also have another holiday coming up, the 19th, which is a week from today, it's gonna be the President's Day holiday, and City Hall will be closed in observance of President's Day. And our next council meeting will be on the 26th at 6:00 PM at the Glasgow City Hall Council Chambers. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
All right, we have-
Second.
And a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Thank you for being here, and thanks for a lot of good work being taken care of here tonight.